Would you like to call this meeting to an end at 6:31 PM? Do all please stand for the Black flag.
To the flags of the United States of America, in the name of our beloved and socialists, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the breathing and justice of God.
Pursuant to the Open Public News Act, I ask for notice that this meeting has been provided as follows: By having the time, date, and place of the meeting posted on the bulletin board in the administration building, January 12, 2024; By sending a copy of the meeting notice to the Star Ledger newspaper and the local stores on January 12, 2024; And by files of a copy attached to Hillside, the Hillside Public Library, January 12, 2024. Board members, please.
Board members, Seela, Niko Hede, Marbury, Tony Evans, Howard, Parks, Shapiro, Beth,
Present.
Lofton.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, everyone.
Here. We would like to have a special presentation from the Hillside Public Schools to one of our very special and wonderful student athletes at this time. President.
Peace and good evening to all. Hope everyone is having a beautiful first day of homeschool for many of our students, second day for some, as we prepare to enter into our spring, our summer season. We want to take the opportunity this evening to call forward a student, hopefully I think I see his mother there with him as well, one of our great eighth grade scholars at WOK Middle School. Mr. Alonso Bland. Want to read through accomplishments of this young scholar. Alonso, eighth grade student at WOK has, over the last several months, participated and competed with the New Jersey Special Olympics, Area Five with Union and Millsack County, on the Mighty Ducks team for the following sports: Swimming, track and field, soccer, and bowling. On April 8th of 2024, Alonso competed in the bowling finals and came in third place and received a bronze medal. On April 7th of 2024, Alonso competed in the area meet, swam 25 backstroke for the time of 16 minutes and 59 seconds, and finished in first place with a gold medal. Then, you know, that wasn't good enough, he swam in the four-by-25 relay team with a time of 1 hour 23 minutes? 1 minute 23 seconds. I'm about to say that. However, first place, gold medal. But he still wasn't done. Swam the 100 freestyle. First place, gold medal. I guess he decided that it was time to rest, did the four-by-50 freestyle relay, and the team came in second place with a silver medal. Then, because you know, that deserves to be recognized, he qualified for the New Jersey State Summer Games. Now, I did mention that he swims, runs track and field, does soccer and bowling. So in his free time, when he's not swimming, participates in top soccer, and last year, the Mighty Ducks won second place for soccer. This year, participated in the West Orange Division for the Spring and Fall. But, he's also a member of our school chorus. He's also on the drum line. Received the top wildcat award for band participation here at WOK. Plays piano, snare drum, and saxophone. Did I mention he's also a great student? Alonso Bland, please come forward with your mother and your family. Alonso, well, perhaps still try to hold the school student recognition award presenting to you, sir, for your achievements in the New Jersey Special Olympics. Thank you, sir.
Awesome.
Will the board members please join me?
What a wonderful way to end this school year as he goes into high school. Congratulations again, Alonso.
Thank you.
Who have the superintendent's report?
Those are the reasons why we get up and do this work. No matter what folks may have to say, no matter what comments come, the Alontzos of our district are the reason why all of us should think about what we're doing.
That's true, yeah.
Mistakes that are made on the course of a day can always be fixed. When we fail to recognize the talents of our own students, they might remember that. I'm sure this moment's going to be special for you because this lives forever in our memories, but it also lives forever live and video. So we'll be able to always look back and say, I was recognized by the district that I was raised in. I think that's an important thing. For our superintendent's report, I also want to just acknowledge and give a lot of accolades to the many awards and celebrations we had this evening. I'm gonna work backwards. How many folks in this room attended the Hillside High School graduations ceremony this past season? Don't, don't be shy, raise your hand. If you did not get a chance, it was a warm evening, but it was a beautiful evening. It was a beautiful evening because we got the chance to approximately, approximately 200, watch, 240 students received their 24, 42, 40. Approximately 240 plus two received their diplomas from Hillside High School. You're quiet, you should applaud. That's the true graduation that is recognized in the state of New Jersey. And those students, majority of them, are going off to military, college, entering careers. So when people have negative words to say about the work that's being done, 242 of our best and brightest are now contributing members of society, get the chance to follow their dreams post-secondary life. The valedictorian speech that took place, she is amazing. I'm so sorry, Emma. Emily Nosa Mucianna. I should know that because she is dying mammoth. Going to the University of Pennsylvania. But the valedictorian, going to Rutgers University. But I should go down the list and name so many of our students. We have students who are already in college, left early for early admissions, came back for their ceremony. Folks, I've had a chance to watch many of these young folks when I came here, naming 10th graders. We have scholars who are on the rise to do great things. So the ceremony at the high school was, was beautiful. Warm, but it was beautiful. Earlier that day, we had the eighth grade ceremony for our students at WOK. How many folks were there for that one? Again, beautiful ceremony. To watch our students, approximately 180...
183, I believe.
I'm off, but, I'm pretty good. 183 students to finish their elementary school years and embark and prepare themselves, embark on that journey for high school, prepare themselves for what's next at our high school, where 242 students just graduated. A week ago today, we were at Hillside Innovation Academy's eighth grade ceremony. Approximately 50 of our grade scholars achieved their certificates of completion of elementary school. Countless, countless, countless awards ceremonies have taken place on our pre-K babies, kindergarten, first grade, sixth grade, honorable ceremonies. If you didn't get a chance to come and see what our babies are doing, our children, our scholars are doing in this district, you're missing trees. Because that's what we're here for. Complete. The test scores don't always show the true character of students. I think sometimes we miss that. Sometimes we get into these debates about how did someone arrive to a place? Here's what I know. Our goal is to put the best teachers in front of our students. Put the best adults. It's hard in this teacher shortage environment right now to do that. But somehow, the word is getting out that we want to come to Hillside. I'm gonna give a little poodles and forgive you. Within the last 48 hours, about 10 individuals have come to Hillside to work as teachers. 10. We're closing the gap. Some people say they're not closing the gap, we're closing the gap. I'm just gonna say this, it's on the agenda, so it's not a secret. You know how hard it is to find a chemistry teacher? A biology teacher? A physics teacher? Well, my grade HR team found a trifecta today. And hopefully now our students will be able to continue their tradition of taking advanced placement courses and college readiness and open courses to prepare them. My report is about making sure we understand that this season is about celebrating our students who are transitioning to their next grade level. There are mistakes that get made along the way, but we can correct those. We can't afford to make too many mistakes, folks, because our babies are coming on those track. They get to that secondary, post-secondary level if they're prepared. As I'm standing up, sitting up here tonight, I want to just also say, there's a special shout out to several members in this audience because I want to just recognize you for some of the great things that you have done to make sure this season is corrected. To the president, vice president of our Hillside Innovation Academy, Hillside Education Association, I want to say thank you and I salute you because you made sure many of our ceremonies that have taken place have been on point. You and all of your government board, board members, I salute and say thank you. Mr. Skeleton, and a few other folks, I don't see them in the room right now. Mr. Skeleton, thank you for what you did for one of our board members this past Tuesday night. And we appreciate you, and I know that our board members and the rest of us appreciate your quick response. And I want to say thank you to so many people, but there are so many folks who have been instrumental in making sure our students get to where they're at. I say thank you to everyone. There are central office staff, there are school based leaders, there are staff parents. Oh my gracious, so many parents who have just stepped in. Spark water to the field because kids run out, spark water to the school, participating field days. I say thank you to you as well. These are my friends and all of you. Now, if you need to give someone, if you don't give your flowers to those who are making sure you're standing in the right space at the right time and they are alive, you may not get a chance to give it to them at all. And I want to give you their flowers. So thank you very much to everyone. My report. My report is filled with students again tonight. So thank you to Principal Graham and Principal Paul McGee, for what you're about to present to our community. You can have a beautiful word to say, happiness. So, in the month of July, for those that have any chance to celebrate, have an ice cream cone on you. It's a passion ice cream. It's also a mental health month, minority mental health month. Make sure that you're still being in tune, connected to work. Your personal stress levels may be. Your massage therapy time. Make sure you don't miss it. Taking walks with your family, going to the beach, on your happy place. So, throughout the course of the year, board members and community, we've been talking about a priority goal to make sure that our first grade students meet their reading and math goals, hitting the standards. I'm happy to report, Ellen, we can say that our students have met the challenge, not to the 100% that I wanted, but we stephanies made significant gains and strides. Principal Graham, I'm sure is going to speak on it, but I just want to share, this is the outcomes for this year. 72% of our first grade students are reading and demonstrating mastery of grade level standards for first grade literacy. 75% of our first grade students demonstrate proficiency and mastery on math skills. There's a part two to this. Part two was mentioned and announced yesterday. Elementary schools here in Hillside, as well as one of our middle schools, but I must specifically stay on our elementary school. The direction that our district is going, and the research that I have done, has put forth the following challenge, that is not just for school leaders, but it's also for all of the community members who care about making sure our students are prepared. Within the next three years, I have challenged every elementary school to continue to demonstrate growth and high academic success. By the end of year three, 2027, all of the elementary schools, Herd Looker, Over Edwards Community School, the Amity Taylor Academy, will be expected to apply for Blue Ribbon status. And I anticipate at least one, but if not all three of them, will be identified as a Blue Ribbon school. For those that don't understand, that's not to be taken lightly, and that's a lot of work to get there. And it's collective work that's gonna have to take place. The reason why it was so important for this goal to be met is these rising second graders are gonna be the ones who help us get to that space where we are a Blue Ribbon school district, as well as three, which is unheard of, elementary schools that are all Blue Ribbon status. We will be applying to Blue Ribbon status because I'm confident that all of the leaders and staff will make sure our students are prepared. That's why this goal was so important for me. Do you understand that by the time these students hit third grade, fourth grade, and fifth, if they still remain around that 75% proficiency, we will be topping the state of New Jersey? So there is a message to that, Maggie. And I'm sure that all of the staff, parents, and students will leave that goal above us to be able to apply to a Blue Ribbon school district, as well as Blue Ribbon elementary school. That being said, Principal Graham, Principal Paul McGee, floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to come up and showcase the progress of our students. I couldn't be prouder of the, of the effort and the growth that I've seen from our incoming second graders, our rising second graders. You may be very proud. We came a long way. I want to talk about the journey that we took to get there. Okay, the end of the year reflection. Very happy that we didn't meet our 100% goal, but I'm very excited of the path that we've taken, our upward trend towards reaching those goals. We followed the school priority goals, we followed every decision based on the Hillside District goals, and our mission statement and vision statement. This was emphasized throughout the year. Every, every decision, all my instruction, I wanted to discuss my role to develop the ability to clearly articulate personal and professional values to staff, students, and parents, and continuously reflect on leadership practices and adapt them to maintain a positive educational culture. I went into the 2023-24 year, Dr. Glover mentioned at one of the principals' meetings over the summer of the big audacious goal of a 100% reading and math proficiency goal. I asked others' principals, did he say first grade? He said first grade. But we didn't run from that opportunity. We, we took it on, and we, it was our chance to display how great the grade one team could be. Our last year data in literacy, we didn't do so well. And we put a lot of effort in, but we only made 51% of our grade one students were proficient in ELA. And in math, we were even worse. We were 39% proficient by the end of the year. So there was a lot of work that went in over the summer to improve those, those areas. So if you look at the benchmark data, you look at the red, you see that's those are the students that are well below. And you look at the blue, those numbers increase by the year. Same thing for math. This was the highest we've been in math in years. And a lot of credit goes out to the teachers, and here's some of our activities and students that we can celebrate. From this slide, the guy on the left that was reading, the funniest thing, students, they will make you laugh every single time. He asked a question about reading to the students, how did they feel? And one student said, I love it when the elderly reads you the class. I said, wow, that's what they think elderly looks like? Wow. So I wanted to thank, before we bring up the first grade students, I wanted to thank the board for providing us with the materials and resources to reach those high goals. First grade students, please come up. I'm sorry, rising second grade student. That's you, that's you. You completed first grade. We have a song queued up, but it's not quite working. So, students, we're gonna sing acapella. My voice is not that good.
Right there. Two little words. Two little words. Not goodbye. It's the end of the year. Graduation is here. Our two little words. To our teacher, and mom, and dad, grandparents, and all. Thank you, thank you, thank you, everyone. Thank you for all you've done. Thank you, thank you, thank you, everyone. Thank you for all you've done. He taught us to be alright. He taught us to learn. He taught us to be alright and how to take our turn. Thank you, thank you, thank you, everyone. Thank you for all you've done. Thank you, thank you, thank you, everyone. Thank you for all you've done.
Thank you, once again, thank you.
Scholars, students in the first grade, you made Principal Graham look real good.
Well, pre-K and kindergarten have experienced so many wild experiences, and also experienced both academically, socially, and religious. So this presentation is just gonna show you a few slides in which our pre-K students, as well as after kindergarten, have had some wild experiences.
Freestyle.
I'm on my way! I'm smarter and smarter, I'm on my way! I'm braver and stronger, I'm on my way! Watch me be the best that I can be! I'm on my way! I'm on my way! I'm smarter and smarter, I'm on my way! I'm braver and stronger, I'm on my way! Watch me be the best that I can be! I'm on my way!
Thank you. Again, awesome job for our first graders with their accomplishments. An awesome job for our pre-K and our kindergarten. And all of the fun that they've had in educational academia. Most importantly, thank you, parents. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And let's continue the partnership. Thank you, board members, so much for allowing us to present. Thank you.
So isn't that why we... Let's give a round of applause for the young students. Excellent job, scholars. Excellent job. So, I want to close out. Because the students are definitely the ones who are the game changers and the showstoppers. I want to remind our families that we have our summer academies. We began it about two years ago. Our summer academies are a piece of hands-on learning exercises. Board members, I'm happy to say that we have a close enrollment made. We have five hundred students registered this year. The students do what you want for us and allow us to do here. And again, I say it's hands-on. We also partner with Scholastic, where we'll be doing Lit Camp. Lit Camp is a fun, hands-on way of doing, keeping our students engaged in the area of literacy. Where it also invites the parents in. So parents, you're going to see these books come home. You're gonna be asked to come to the school to participate. It's a continuation and part of a larger initiative where we continue to stress the love for reading. I wish you all a great evening. Thank you very much.
Mr. President, I would like to report for the principals. We appreciate you and all of the students that do all of the wonderful work that you do. May I have, I'm sorry, yes, may I have a motion to go into public comments? Aye. Residents are requested to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. And the event appears the public comment portion of the meeting makes use fifteen minutes. Designing officer will read each statement made by participants in free ministoration. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. All comments will be considered and response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. The board asks that members of the public be courteous and mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the board are discouraged and will not be responded to by the board. Students and employees have specifically the rights afforded by the laws of the state of Jersey. The report there is no responsibility nor will it be liable for any comments made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments and live the individual rights of those affected or identified in their public and be aware that they are legally responsible and liable for those comments.
Angela Lawler, Fifty-Four Herdens Street. Um, that was amazing. I love seeing the little ones. I love seeing the big ones. But the little ones kind of hit you right in the heart. Um, but that's due to the fact, as Mr. Glover said, we have some amazing teachers in our district. So without those amazing teachers, you would not see a performance like that. So I'm excited. I'm really excited. To tag on what Mr. Glover said about giving flowers as we are here, right? Instead of waiting until after. Earlier this month, um, the Union County Education Association hosted an event. Um, it was called the Friends of Education. Um, each union, each district, was asked to nominate someone from within their district for this award. It could have been a teacher, it could have been a community member, um, anyone who affects children and education. Mr. Glover is being a little shy right now. Um, I had the pleasure of nominating Mr. Glover. And the reason behind nominating Mr. Glover, and there was a long thing that went with it, and I won't read my whole speech. But the gist of it is, his innovative thinking. Allowing us to do what we need to do within the district to do things better for the students and better for staff and parents. His innovative thinking brings us to a point where we have performances like this, where we reach goals of seventy-five percent in first grade. Without someone thinking this way, we would stay stagnant. So Mr. Glover was amongst four or five recipients that received the award. But I just wanted everyone to know that. Four, thank you. Um, we do appreciate Mr. Glover. Although we might not always see eye to eye, we always find a common ground between us. So I just wanted everyone to know, I know he was not, he does not speak on himself, so I'm going to do that for him. So he was awarded the inaugural Union County Friend of Education Award. So thank you.
Sharina Delaral, Sixty-Five Clark Street, Philly Men, everyone. AP Morris, that was wonderful. My daughter is twenty-eight years old and she is the Director of Marketing for Robert Wood Johnson's Children's Specialized Hospital. And her kindergarten teacher was just sitting right there, Ms. Drapco. And Ms. Diggs, they were her teachers, her first teachers. And I thank them because without teachers, none of us would be anything but people, right? So I thank them for that. Mr. Glover, congratulations on your award. I was there on that rainy evening. And it was, you gave a very nice speech as well. And I also want to thank Ms. Helen, who we've adopted at Ola Edwards Community School. She came and she bought ice pops for all the students at the school. And not only did she buy them, she came and gave them out. And I appreciate that. And I appreciate all that you've done, this board, for Ola Edwards and the children of this community. Because without you, we couldn't do what we do. And we thank you for coming to read to them, coming in and donating your time. And for me, time is the most important resource that we have. And I thank you for your time. Even if you couldn't come, you sent something or you called. And I thank you for that. On behalf of all the parents in Hillside, and I'm not the principal of Ola Edwards, but I'm here to say I thank you for participating in the carnival and all the other things that we've done this year. Because we did a lot of things, the color run. I have pictures of you, so don't do nothing you don't want to let us see. But I appreciate you and I thank you. Have a good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Arunamathura, One Thirty-Three Silver Ave, T Street, WOK. Um, kind of piggybacking off of Angela and, um, what Ms. Lawler said, I just want to say thank you for showcasing and allowing the time, Mr. Glover and the board, allowing the time for the schools to be able to showcase a little bit of something at the board meetings. Um, it allows us in different schools to find out what's going on in the other schools. I can't wait to get these kids into WOK. Like, they are gorgeous, they are beautiful, they are smart. Um, it really allows us a little bit of insight. Um, so thank you so much for all of that and for all that you do for us, to support us so that we can support our students on an everyday basis. Good evening, members. Mr. Glover, friend.
I'm not gonna do nothing. You go today. Don't worry about it.
Same as the rest of the people right here, I want to thank everyone of you. Thank you, Mr. Glover. Um, I see a lot of potential in school. With the teachers, they're doing an amazing job. Everyone. And Ola Edward and AP Morris, this is my last year on AP Morris with a little one. He's going to Ola Edward. I hope so. Thank you. I was wondering, a quick question, um, if it's any possible way that we can just give more challenging activities for everyone? Like, last time, two years ago, there was a math activity, I think, math challenger, something like that. That Ola Edward was the first time weighing the price. So, you know, get more into that for the kids. It's a lot of attention on our kids and each of them. So, something like, you know, to motivate them. Like, more activity, physical activity, or more to challenge more weight. If, the money, thank you. Um, in my particular case, I'm not really fanatic of technology. I have to be honest. Uh, suddenly is the world we live in right now, technology for everything. But I wish, you know, very deep, to get back to many years ago with the books, where everything, a dictionary, just to find a word, definition or something. Today, for today, um, we use Alexa or Siri just to get the definition of something, when it's more like getting to a book, to read. Um, on this summer, I don't have too many, um, activities with my kids, but I've been in an hour, not twenty minutes, an hour reading, which I start on Monday with the kiddos. So I have questions for them, but I wanted to do more with them. So I wish, as a parent, uh, if we can just give more to the kids. More activity to hand on, more books, more reading. I really appreciate that. Thank you again for everything. You guys are amazing. Thank you. I'll see you next year. I have too many questions. Thanks.
Motion to close? Angela Lawler, Fifty-Four Herdens Street. I just wanted to say, I know Mr. Wallard is not here. Um, he couldn't be here this evening. But I just wanted to say thank you for hiring Mr. Wallard. This was his first year at Hillside High School and it was a huge undertaking. Following someone with a long career in education, someone who was a staple in the community. Um, he came in as an unknown, but he goes out as being known. He really made a huge impact on the high school. And I'm speaking as his secretary, not as the union president. Um, I'm speaking as his secretary because he is an amazing person to work for. He is very caring about the students and about the staff. So it was a little bit of a shift, you know? Everybody has to get used to somebody new. But I have to say, he closed out the year on top. With two hundred and forty-two graduates, that's probably the most we've had in a very long time. So I just wanted to give him his kudos. Thank you.
Paul and Phelan?
President Glover?
I want to just humbly say to the three thousand plus students and the six hundred staff members and employees in this district, thank you. I say thank you because you allowed this job for me as challenges may be. You allowed me to go home at night and lay my head on my pillow, excited about waking up the next day. Thank you for recognition should be shared with so many. Folks, you don't understand the amount of positive energy. It's tough. This is tough work. But the amount of, the amount of tough... Sorry, Miss Candy. The amount of challenges that we experience as a collective body, we don't run away from. And I want people to understand that. We don't run away from them because our students deserve us to run towards whatever the challenges may be. But I'm only as good as the people who walk with me. You know, I didn't come here to have adversarial conversations with union members. That's not what you do. I used to be a union rep. I understand that conversation and those tough conversations we got to have. I didn't come here to destroy a district. I came here to make a district have a lasting impact for the lives of kids. The recognition I received a few weeks ago was just a reflection of all the people in this district. Those who work in it and those who support it from the external. So I say thank you for sharing that. You didn't have to. I appreciate you and I appreciate all those. Miss Candy, you are always reminding the board members their work. Thank you. And I say on behalf of the board members, thank you for inviting us. Ola Edwards always has us in all the schools, too. Ola Edwards has always called us to be the center and president. Ms. Madora, thank you for that. We're gonna continue to showcase. So maybe WOK be first next year, so you can set the bar. Um, to the parent from AP Morris and as a child from Ola Edwards, that's part of the reason why I mentioned about the hands-on learning this summer. We're also flooding our homes with books. Scholastic made a donation to the high school a few weeks ago, where every graduate senior receives five books plus. We're gonna continue that with Scholastic. And as parents, you're gonna be getting involved. We're gonna be seeking volunteers within the community to make sure we come in and read to our students. And yes, we're gonna make sure every child has a library by the time they graduate from, a home library. You're a hundred percent. You have a lot of great school leaders. But Mr. Wallard did set the bar for the rest of us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Vice President Howard, a chance to leave the voice, please?
Certainly. Leading man has a leading role. Ms. Seelo, would you be, I don't know, what's the name of the line?
We can hear you.
It wasn't me. What's in here?
The finance committee met on Monday and Stephanie Adams on the agenda.
Second meeting, black.
Yes, um, the committee yet, Monday, during the training talk. And this course, I can't list it.
Courtney Gibbons, for the meeting.
Good evening. The Education Committee met on this past March eighth, June twenty-fourth. And we give items one to fourteen. Not one to forty this month. One to fourteen.
Harvey, if you could maybe report it more as often.
The Policy Committee met on Monday, June twenty-fourth. And we discussed what, what we want to change.
Is sounding sound responsive? Please, the Board of Labor, please.
Good evening. The Labor Committee met to go over on June twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-fourth, line item one to fifty-six.
Thank you, Vice President Howard. May I have a motion to go into executive session? Be resolved pursuant to the Open Public Meeting... Be resolved pursuant to the Open Public Meeting Act that the Board of Education may enclose the executive session at this time to discuss matters related to personnel, pending litigation, labor negotiations, contract negotiations, attorney-client privilege. The Board will reconvene in public session at the conclusion of the closed session. The matters discussed in closed session will be disclosed to the public as soon as the need for confidentiality no longer exists.
Board Member Seelo? Rick Wady? Harvey? Courtney Gibbons? Howard? Clark? Shapiro? Beth?
Oh God, that's not nice.
Remember Shapiro, two people, finance?
I'd like to move items one through ten and fourteen under finance.
Give me a second. Board Member Silo? Segway Hedy? Hardaway? Gordon Gibbons? Mr. Howard? Parks? Mr. Shapiro? President Bass? Motion to class. Smiley, turn and say hi, boys.
The ground? Yes, I want to move, the items one through six, second.
Board Member Silo? Ms. Segway Hedy? Hardaway? Gordon Gibbons? Mr. Howard? Parks? Mr. Shapiro? President Bass? Motion carries.
Remember Gordon Gibbons? I'd like to move items one items one through fourteen. Any questions on the motion?
Silo? Segway Hedy? Hardaway? Gordon Gibbons? Mr. Howard? Parks? How about the rest? Mr. Shapiro? President Bass? Motion carries.
Remember? Ms. Silo, please.
I'd like to move item one A.
Any questions on the motion?
Ms. Silo? Segway Hedy? Hardaway? Gordon Gibbons? Mr. Howard? Mr. Parks? Mr. Shapiro? President Bass? Motion carries.
Remember Parks, please move later.
I'd like to move items one through fifty-six over here.
Any questions on the motion?
Ms. Silo? Segway Hedy? Hardaway? Gordon Gibbons? Mr. Howard?
Yes, to one through sixty-six, but the extension on
Mr. Parks? Mr. Shapiro?
Yes, to state twenty-nine.
President Bass? Motion carries.
So we do have to go back into executive session, but before we do that, can I say to Glover, do you want to make an announcement?
I do want I do want to make an announcement. I apologize for not early making this announcement when everyone was here. Members of the board, specifically Joanne Gordon Gibbons and others from Burton and our Vice President Donald Howard, participated in an ice cream social with our students from our high school. A very fun-filled day. I'm gonna tell you how much fun it was. I was walking down the hallway and one of the students came to me and he says, "Man, we had a good time yesterday." And then he went on to describe some of the things that took place, and I said, "Ooh, doesn't sound like he was supposed to be doing all that." Then I realized our board members encouraged it. So it was a good time by our students, they had a great time, and I wanted to just acknowledge and give a salute and applause to our board members.
Thank you, thank you for all you do, to all of the board members. As I say, he will be going into executive session, so may I have
Before we do that, man, the president's gonna go, I think.
I don't know if he's done this already, but I did.
We'll be back, though. May I have a motion to go into executive session?
Board Member Silo?
Wait, no, we're going back into executive session.
Hardaway? Segway Hedy? Gordon Gibbons? Mr. Howard? Parks? Mr. Shapiro? President Bass?
Be resolved pursuant to the Open Public Meeting Act that the Board of Education need to close the executive session at this time to discuss matters relating to pending or anticipated litigation personnel. The Board will reconvene in public session at the conclusions of the closed session. The matters discussed in closed session will be disclosed to the public as soon as the need for confidentiality no longer exists.
It's our intention to come back.
Correct, when we come back from executive session, we will be adjourned to meeting. No, we're gonna, yeah, we have to come back, but
There might be no business, so action may be taken, we'll see.
Action may be taken. We shall be turned up.
Stay tuned.
Go back and
Motion.
Who's second here? Hall of Fame. Listen, my understanding is that there was a matter in finance that wasn't addressed, that's number eleven. Motion to renew R.D. Parisi's Associate Professional Leadership Management. That needs a moving, a motion to move it in a second, a heroic call. Yeah, it would be recommended. Correct, but if nobody moves it in seconds, then it won't be moved, but it wasn't called. Eleven wasn't called. So Need the second? Board Member Silo? Segway Hedy? Hardaway? Gordon Gibbons? Howard? Parks? Shapiro? Bass? Motion carries.
Is there any old or new business? Remember Vice President Howard, would you like to say any closing remarks?
Good evening once again, everyone. Really thank you for your patience, I thank you for just abiding with us, and again, to all of my comrades in arms out there, all of our educators, whether they're certificate or they're just educated by practice or as a parent. I just want to say thank you all for all that you've done during this school year, it has been an amazing year once again. People just don't know what we do, working in public schools. It is a truly, it's a labor of love, and I tell everyone, don't always forget, it is labor, trust me. Someone asked me, "Why do teachers get such long vacations?", I said, "Well, they're not on vacation, they're in recovery." So enjoy your time off, we probably will be again in July, but if you don't make it back, have an absolutely fabulous summer. I beg you just to be safe, stay hydrated, and once again, well, thank you so, so very much for doing all of your end-of-year lab show.
If there are no other comments, I'll Sorry about that, we just wanted to make sure we didn't overlook something else that was in our folder. With that said, if there are no other comments, we can, I will request a motion to adjourn.
Hall of Fame? Motion carries.